For calling the orders, TUUSD 201 School Board Meeting for June 18th, 2024. And we'll start with roll call.
Adina Hoover?
Here.
Whitney Rogers?
Here.
Jessica Redonia?
Here.
Carlos Avia?
Here.
Angela Steckety?
Kevin Marin?
Here.
Leah Canover?
Here.
You will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And always exciting to have any student presentation or recognition here today. So I'll call Dr. Whack to the podium and Brian Dunn.
Oh, don't lean into mic, it says up here. Okay, well, good evening, everyone. I'm Kevin Whack, and I'm the principal of Westmont High School. And tonight's a special night. We get a chance to recognize some of our student athletes who excelled this past spring. Some of them can be here with us and some of them can't. I'd also like to thank Coach Dunn, our A.D., and also track coach for all of his hard work in being here tonight to recognize some of our track athletes. And then Coach Filgrin as well, thanks for being here. And then we've also got Kyla, Joe Coney, and Abe Johnson here as our student athletes. And they just worked so hard this year, and this is a great opportunity for us to recognize that within our community. The first person I'd like to recognize is Lucas Hicks. He can't be here with us tonight, he's got a baseball game, but he graduated and he's going on to St. Xavier University to play baseball. He was actually an all-conference football player for us in the fall as well. But Lucas Hicks had a tremendous baseball career with us. And I think it's important for us to take a moment just to kind of go over what he was able to accomplish for our, it was a very highly successful baseball program that we've had over the last few years. And he really excelled because of his hard work. He was only the third Sentinel baseball player to earn the Illinois High School Baseball Coaches Association All-State Honors. So we've had a great program for many years, and he's only the third Sentinel to be recognized for that, joining Charlie and Joe Donovan. So that's quite the accomplishment. He's single season on-base percentage, was a school record, .639. He had a .494 batting average. That means basically one out of two at bats, he was getting a baseball, a hit here. So that's tremendous. Fifty-three runs scored. He had a six-and-one record on the pitcher's mound with a .98 ERA and 91 strikeouts. He was a three-time team MVP, three-time All-Conference, the 2023 Metro Suburban Conference MVP, the 2024 Metro Suburban Conference Pitcher of the Year, three-time All-Area, committed to play baseball then at St. Xavier, like I mentioned. And he was just a tremendous leader for not just the baseball program, but for our football program as well. And just a great young man, and he's going to be highly successful, and he's going to be close by. So the nice thing is, some of his games, people can attend and it'll be convenient. So he's going to do very well there. So they're lucky to have him. So nice job to Lucas Hicks. And then two of our other athletes who can't be with us tonight because they're at a shootout at Addison Trail, who I'd like to recognize. We've got Danielle Hoover and Caitlin Hoover, and both girls were selected by the IHSSCA, which is the Illinois High School Soccer Coaches Association. Danielle was selected as the All-Sectional, and Caitlin received an All-Sectional, All-Sectional Honorable Mention. So they've been excelling in terms of their soccer, but right now they're playing basketball for us. So multi-sport athletes, and they are just tremendous leaders in their own right. And they're coming back, they'll be with us next year leading these programs. So we're lucky to have them. And at this time, I would like to turn it over to Coach Dunn, who wants to take a moment to recognize our boys' track team. Coach?
Oh, together?
Yeah. Boys and girls together. I'll do the talking. I've got all, she's got all the stats. We actually were just at dinner, so we were just talking about this. Like, I've got all the stats, I'm not going to go through all the stats, but I know everything, so I can do all the talking. So we had an outstanding track season on both boys and girls' side. Fortunately, we have three of our athletes here who were able to be here tonight. So before we talk about our three athletes here, I do want to recognize several athletes and a couple of relays that were not able to be here tonight. So we had Annika Enstrom, who was a sectional medalist in the 100 and Dash. Emma Silva was also a sectional medalist in the 100 and Dash. Sadie Scales, first year in track and field this year, she came out for track this spring and got shot put, sectional medalist out of that. Our four-by-four relay of Stella Sabato, Franceschi, Victoria Dubio, Annika Enstrom, and Kyla, who's back there, were also sectional medalists. On the boys' side, we had one individual medalist, which was Alex Tolzik, who was a sectional medalist in pole vault. We also had a relay, four-by-eight of Michael, Michael, yeah, Michael, Christian, Dylan, and Quinn, who were all sectional medalists. And then we do have a couple more sectional medalists, but the rest of them were also state qualifiers for boys' track and field this spring. So two of them that could not be here tonight were Paul Laund, who qualified for state in the 3200, and Billy McGee, who also qualified for state in the high jump. And our four-by-four relay of Michael and JuPaul, Caleb Zika, and Joe back there, qualified for state in that four-by-four, which I think Joe will agree with me, that was one of the craziest four-by-four finishes we've had in quite some time, so.
It's sectional, yeah.
Yeah, it's sectional, yeah. It was, it was, it was crazy. And then Joe, not only did qualify for state in the 400 and Dash, he also qualified for state in lawn jump. And then Abe over there, we'll talk about Abe a little bit more in a minute, but he was a three-time state qualifier this spring in lawn jump, triple jump, and high jump. And then Kyla over there did the distance double qualifying for state in the 3200 meter run and the 1600 meter run. So Kyla, this spring, track, but she was also all-state in cross-country earlier this fall, ended up running the fastest three-mile time we've ever had in school history for Westmont Girls, 17:41.
Yeah, and we've had some, we've had teams that were second place in state, so that's a pretty high bar.
We have teams that were second place in state. We have never had a Westmont Girl break 18 minutes on that three-mile course at that wire until Kyla this past November.
We would have had it for two more years.
Kyla, this spring, she was twice conference champion, she did 3200 and four-by-four conference champions, and then she was the sectional medalist in state qualifier. And then, this will be a recurring thing between Kyla and Abe, but we had several school records that were broken. She broke, ends up breaking four school records along the way this season. She broke the indoor 800 and school record in like the first meet of the season, I think, too, which is pretty impressive to do, is break a school record in the first meet of the season. And then she also broke the indoor 1600 and school record. And then, so she qualified to state in 32 and 16, and then you had the state prelims, and then you had to qualify from the prelims to finals in every event except for the 3200. So Paul went straight to Saturday on the boys' side with the 3200. Everybody else had a chance to qualify out of prelims to finals for that. So Kyla had to run the 1600 on her Thursday prelim, and she ended up setting a school record at the state meet in that 1600, .508.89, which actually broke a 30-year-old school record. And that person, that, that record that she broke, that runner, was the state champion in 3200 and 1600. So it was pretty impressive. And then she came back on Saturday, and she ran another school record in the 3200, ran 1104.78 there, and broke also another 30-year-old school record by that state champion back in 1994.
And took fourth in state.
And she was fourth in state, so she got herself a nice state medal and got us a few points in the team standings there. Now Abe here, had himself quite the weekend here in Charleston, didn't we, Abe? So Abe, so he was the three-time conference champion, and actually I should say, he's like, I think Abe, you told me at the beginning of the year, he's like, I just want to jump, right? And I said, you probably need to run a little bit, I mean, it's track and field. He didn't want to. He, he did run a little bit, but ended up, Abe ended up being the right, making the right call, he just needed to jump, and that's all he had to do. And so he swept conference in all three of those, lawn jump, triple jump, high jump. Came to sectional, did the exact same thing, won all three, lawn jump, triple jump, high jump, qualified for state in all three. And then he qualified out of prelims to finals in all three events. And there were a couple other athletes that did the same thing, right? So you, like, you were just watching you three doing the exact same thing all weekend long. Then on Saturday morning, I don't think I stopped, stopped running around for the first two hours, the state meet on Saturday, because Abe was going from high jump to lawn jump to triple jump, and just going back and forth between all those events. So Abe then first, he had lawn jump, we'll talk about that in a minute, but he ended up finishing second in high jump at state, six foot five and some change there, right? And then in triple jump, he had a school record, 13.94 meters, which is like 45 something feet.
Which was his own record that he broke?
And broke his own school record there. He ended up breaking the school record this season in lawn jump, triple jump, and high jump outdoors, and also broke the indoor school record in lawn jump and triple jump. And then, so he had that triple jump, 13.94 meters, second in state there as well. And then, we didn't even realize it until the last minute, but he ended up as state champion in lawn jump, because, and of course, we're running, because Abe and you and I are running back and forth all over the place, and so what the end up, they do it all in meters. And so Abe jumped his 6.77 meters on his fifth jump, he's got three jumps on Thursday, three jumps on Fri, on Saturday. And so then there was another guy, I don't remember what school, but another guy jumped exactly 6.77 on his last jump, right? And so you actually had to go back and look at the previous best jumps, and Abe won that state championship by a centimeter. It was that close. It was that close. So, and then, of course, you can see on the memo that we sent out that there's some rankings up there. One of those actually just happened this past weekend, because Abe went out to Philadelphia and competed at the New Balance Indoor, not Indoor, if we're going indoors in July, then June, that's not good, in New Balance Outdoor Nationals in Philadelphia, and competed in high jump. And so he emailed me yesterday and said, because I was asking how it was going, and he's like, yeah, I got second place at Nationals. So, like, so he ended up jumping six feet, 10 and 3/4 inches. And right now, if I was looking at athlet.net, I believe that's ranked number 24th in the nation.
Wow.
For high school. So we just had an outstanding season, these, all three of these athletes had outstanding season, and we're really proud of them, and we're really excited for what our future track series can do next year and beyond. But thank you for all of your efforts this season. Be proud of yourselves.
And it was really sad. Out till senior year of the boys, and so too bad we didn't have them for the 40 years they were at high school. Lots of pushing them in, lots of luck in the future. Good luck. And Kyla, we get you tomorrow.
Yes.
Eastern Illinois?
Joe, you told me you were. What was it again?
John Melvin.
John Melvin University, where's that again? Fantastic. So Abe, Joe's going out there, Abe, you just committed to Eastern Illinois, which is actually the site of the state meet.
Once they saw them, they're like, we gotta have them.
There must be something about that big blue track they have down there.
He just, he just sent them a email and just said the same thing to you, he just wants to jump, that's all.
He gets practice, he just jumps between classes now at Eastern, just get ready for the track out there. Now, so it was, so you just did commit to Eastern, right, before going out to Nationals, right? Yeah. So very proud of our athletes, and of course, I know there's many that were not here, but we're really proud of all of our athletes this school year. They've had a lot of accomplishments, and we're really looking forward to next year.
Just going to get a quick picture of you guys.
Board President, Board President.
Get them here with the board and then with the bag.
I don't know, but I don't want to.
I'm going to follow Anthony's lead and I'm going to step back.
Hi.
Thanks for, thanks for having the kids come.
Great. I've been trying to keep stuff out of your business, but. Somebody called Suzie, that's something that went off. Stole or something happened to Dylan's house.
I just heard recently.
Just so you know, the microphones might be on.
I don't know, but Charlie gets a phone call after he's come home, and Jacob's upset. He's like, the cops are talking to my mom, and her name was brought up because she had eaten at the pad. And I'm like, okay. And I looked at Charlie and I said, no officer would have called somebody. I said, so if someone shows up after nine o'clock at our house tomorrow, then we know something's wrong. Every time, the last couple days I dropped off a bomb, I wish to see. I know, but I'm like.
Did that slide in the vote for?
I know, I know. It's like, nobody will ever come and call.
Some of you guys, ready?
I'm like.
We did a mini moon. So like, we just, we stayed in Florida for three to four days. Yeah, during winter break.
Good.
For the two weeks of winter break, we're going to be in South Africa. Because it's there summer.
Exactly. But that's going to be awesome.
Yeah, yeah, we're excited.
Thank you.
So have you guys, or are you guys still planning that out, just as far as the search?
Yeah, we're still planning it out, yeah, yeah.
It's so good.
Thank you, guys, congratulations.
Except Amelia and Shannon Simpson were not late, so they're not listening here.
So you guys, I'm just going to keep it moving with our motion, next motion for closed session.
Yeah, I mean.
The Chair, entertain a motion to enter closed session for the purpose of discussing personnel issues, student discipline, and superintendent evaluation.
Second?
Roll call.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
We're returning from closed session and we'll proceed through the agenda. Next is our approval of minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the May 14, 2024, regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
Some move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the May 14, 2024, regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There's no public comment at this time, so we'll proceed with the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. One, personnel recommendations. Megan Kreese, kindergarten teacher. Sarah Cunningham.
Elementary teacher.
Joshua McLeod, math teacher, WJHS. Jessica Viskara, instructional coach. Janet Lockridge, long-term sub, Westmont High School counselor. Stephen Davis, summer school TA. Kelly Ivenelli, summer school TA. Jalen Jordan, summer school TA. Karen McGee, teaching assistant. Kelsey James, facility summer worker. Andrew Andressic, volunteer football coach. Amelia Maslany, speech language pathologist. Shannon Simpson, art teacher. Resignations and retirement. Two, approval of the May 2024 expenditure report. Three, approval of the June 2024 expenditure report. Four, ratification of the May 2024 regular payroll. Five, appointment of school teacher, I'm sorry. Appointment of school treasurer and renewal of treasurer's bond.
Some moved. Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckedy?
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll move to our information and discussion, starting with our dual enrollment offering at Westmont High School and College of the Peach.
Hi again, everyone. Yes, so I just want to give a brief overview of what we're looking to do. With dual enrollment, with COD, we are looking to have one of the adjunct professors teach our Spanish five, honor Spanish five class. On Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, we'll have the adjunct professor with us, with Paul Sevedine, who's our new Spanish teacher. And they will then have the opportunity to gain six credit hours at COD. And simultaneously, they'll also have the opportunity to take their AP test again, so they can gain even more hours if they pass that exam. So I think it's a win for our students in terms of the time and effort that they're going to put into our Spanish program, to be able to walk away with something, to help set them up for success once they go on to college. Any other, do you guys have any questions for me in terms of what that might look like?
Does this come after?
Sorry. I think we're asking the same thing.
Does this come after AP Spanish? You said to take their AP Spanish again.
Yeah, so AP Spanish four is when.
Got it.
That's when they'll be taking their first test. It's a difficult test, and we thought, why not? You know, and the nice thing is, if you get a three in AP Spanish four your junior year, you can then retake and maybe get a four or five and still get more college credits with the additional score that you might be able to get. So we think that that's a benefit to them, to continue honing those skills and building on what they've already accomplished.
So Spanish five exists already?
Yes.
Yes?
We have Spanish five right now.
So is this another Spanish five? Or is it essentially taking that Spanish five and making it a and making it a dual credit?
Correct.
Yeah. So it's not necessarily like.
No, it's not something new we haven't had before.
A new offering, yeah.
But now that we have AP Spanish and AP French, we thought this would be a good time to go ahead and take that Spanish five and kind of build off of that AP Spanish, to give them the dual enrollment as well as another opportunity at the AP Spanish.
Awesome.
Yeah, so.
Like you said, there's more credits.
Yeah, so this.
Potential for more credits, which is nice.
It's going to have a specific focus for our students and an opportunity to continue gaining credits even after junior year. Now, they can get, you know, if they score a five, you know, on their AP Lang their junior year, which is very difficult to do.
Okay.
We can then, their senior year, look at that Spanish five, but then.
The dual enrollment.
AP Lit or something along those lines.
Because they could take the AP and the dual credits from COD and transfer it elsewhere.
Yes.
Yeah, so like you said, it's more credit.
They'll be able to take those credits, yeah.
So how many credits are they going to earn?
So they'll be, yeah, with the dual enrollment, it's six semester hours.
That's good.
Yes.
What is it currently now, with just APs, like with the AP course?
Well, with AP, if they pass the AP Lang with a three, it depends on the university, but they can get anywhere from six, nine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's not an easy test.
Okay.
Very difficult.
So what is, what is the option again, if you get a five on your junior year?
If you get a, if you get a five, which I don't know if you actually had that their junior year, their senior year, they could, we could also then, they would still take the six semester hours with COD.
Okay.
But we can also start to infuse some of the AP Lit. But that is an even more difficult test. You know, the idea is that most likely our students are going to score somewhere in the range of two to four on the AP Lang, so we want to build off of that for their senior year, so that they can walk away with additional credit hours.
That's a lot of credits.
Yeah.
So just to put a dollar amount on it, a credit hour at COD costs $425, and they'd be earning six potentially?
Yes.
So $2,500 in credit hours that we would not need to pay at the college level, potentially.
Right. And for, you know, taking Spanish in colleges, it's a different ballgame.
Mm-hmm. Very cool.
So it's a great way to kind of set our kids up for success.
Is there any kind of minimum, maximum enrollment for this course, and any concern you wouldn't meet the minimum?
Well, we're hoping to grow, and the nice thing is with the dual language program, I believe that, you know, our kids are going to come in.
Shouldn't be an issue.
You know, stronger skills. And I hopefully, you know, after the first year, we can continue building off the 15 students we're planning on enrolling this year, you know, and kids will, they'll want to do this because it's really going to help them grow as Spanish speakers.
And where is this housed?
So this will be first period in, I think it's going to be Mr. Sebedine's class, which will be right across from the attendance office. Yeah, it's at the high school. So the adjunct professor will be here on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays.
Okay. We don't like pay extra for that. It's part of their adjunct salary? Like this is one of their courses, basically?
We'll be paying per semester. It's around $3,500 a semester for the adjunct professor's cost.
Okay, so that's different than the, is this course materials then, the other cost down here?
I don't know which, yeah.
Oh, wait, I see it. Hold on. All good.
Yeah, this, to talk about, just as our kids who started in dual all those years ago are matriculating to their junior and senior year, this is a beautiful.
Transition.
Yeah, it really is. They have a great opportunity here. And, and we're going to have them take the AP test a second time, so they can gauge their progress from the previous year. And maybe if the six credits is awesome, they could possibly gain more than that.
More.
So it really gives the kids something to shoot for, and they know that target from the time they could start with dual, and the parents can too. Like, if I keep pursuing this, I could end up with six, nine credits or more, and possibly, you know, seal by literacy and being bilingual. That's a lot of beautiful incentives.
It's a great opportunity for our students, and we have a really strong Ms. Gomez and Mr. Sebedine, they're already, they're jumping on this and they're excited about it. So I'm really excited about this.
I'm excited about it because I work for a university and we're partnered with COD.
There we go.
I get it. That's why I'm digging into it, like, okay, because we have a lot of students that bring over AP alone, let alone, like you said, it's AP and potentially, if not dual credit, just to.
Yes.
To have them come in, you know, and we do flat rate based tuition. So having them come from COD possibly over, that would be like, I'm just excited for this.
Yeah, we are too.
So, yeah.
The dual credit program with COD is an amazing benefit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For, and COD is in our community, which is beautiful, right? Like, I look forward to seeing more of this.
It's great.
Not just the dual kids.
Right.
That's what I was about to say.
Additional, additional courses down the road.
You're, you're already there. Yeah.
Is this our only one right now?
We have another one.
Do we have any dual credit math, or?
Well, so right now we have Incubator, which is a dual credit. You know, and one of the things that I want to, thank you so much for all the support, and we could not do this without you guys being very open-minded and, you know, forward-thinking. You know, we want to make sure that, because we are, in my estimates, the number one AP program in the country, I want to make sure that we continue to support that because our kids are thriving under those expectations and support, and it's really setting them up for success after high school. And this is something with AP Spanish, that we understand the rigor and the difficulty of passing this exam. It gives them something else they can shoot for once they graduate, that they're not walking away with, maybe a score they didn't like on their AP test that they took. But we have such a high pass rate with, and success with our other AP programs, we don't necessarily jeopardize that right now because they're doing so well, and we're so proud of them for that. But yes, we want to continue providing as many opportunities for our students as possible. So we're always going to be open-minded in terms of what our student needs are.
Innovation.
Yeah, right? We do this together. It's very collaborative, and appreciate the support.
Thank you.
Any other questions you might have? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Caber.
Thanks.
Okay, now we're going to move to our EO Sullivan update.
Hi, I'm Ed Sullivan, I'm the owner of EO Sullivan Consulting. We've been working with the district for about two, three months, and we, if we remember from our early presentations, our process to engage a community is a four-phase process, and we just finished phase one. And so phase one is really about introducing what community engagement is all about. It's to really see, are there any issues out there that may, maybe the district or the administration doesn't know about? Usually you'll get people out and say, hey, I, we had one district didn't build a certain portion of their referendum, and 20 years later, they were going to referendum again, and the district remembered it. And so that's really where we're introducing at a broad range, asking different broad questions on how the community feels about the district and various parts of the district. And so really, when we start phase one, we start with messaging. We work with the district to talk about, you know, what are the great things about the district? What are the challenges of the district? And we convey that to the public, so they understand how we got here, what we're trying to accomplish, and some of the challenges that the district faces. And really introduce that we're going to talk about that over the next few months. And so that's messaging, and I believe you all have our messaging document that we have. And that will change. We're entering phase two, where we're starting to talk about menu items and really getting into more of the nitty-gritty of community engagement and what's going on with the different projects potentially that are out there and solutions. We started with community committee, and you guys built, the administration built a great community committee. Twenty-one people, I believe, is what the final count was, that was, were very well engaged. We're going to collect data three different ways, and your community committee is what we consider your informed group. And so we're able to get them a little bit more information and see how they may or may not change their mind from the beginning of when they learn about things, all the way through the process. Because that lets us know what we need to do out in the public and how we potentially can change hearts and minds to what we want to do. And so we met with them, and I will go over some of the data that we, we got from them. We had public engagement. In essence, we asked, we put online a series of questions and sent out emails and had the public engage that way. There was, I believe, seventy-six, seventy-eight members of the public went online and filled out the public engagement questionnaire after seeing, you know, a presentation. And so that's really good feedback. But remember, this is, it's solicited feedback, but we're not giving a drop-down menu of items for them to say, all right, I want to see this infrastructure or that type of teacher initiation. This is all genuine from them, and so anything that I talk about here is coming from your public unsolicited, if you will. And that's all in feedback reports. And so I'll go over those real quickly. From the public itself, like I said, we had fifty, seventy-eight members fill out the online version of this questionnaire. So question one was, what are our schools doing well? And in both the community feedback and the community committee, we're going to see a general theme here, that people believe that we have great teachers and great academics at D-201, and they believe that the infrastructure is a needed item. And so we're going down the right path and starting to get good information from them. And so in question one with, and I'm doing, I'm dealing with just the feedback form summary from the public, your top two, three, your top two are teacher staff and academics. And so that obviously tells us that, you know, people really enjoy what the teachers and academics are doing here. But we do then see individual instruction up there as well. And so we like knowing that the, the public supports their schools, supports their teachers, that should really help as we engage a community going forward. What challenges do our schools face, question two, and what could we do better? Once again, you see academics and curriculum, that they really are focused on that. But now we're starting to see facilities, that this is a challenge that the public sees, and it's a larger percentage than the rest at 20% of all the responses. So once again, we see that facilities are starting to climb into their consciousness. What changes and improvements would you like to see to our schools? And here is an overwhelming number, 21% of all the respondents, 53% are, 53 respondents. Facilities are, are things that they would like to see improved in the schools. And so once again, this is a community engagement process to talk about facilities and talk about the future of the district, so we'd like to see that as part of our data. And once again, early on data, we will get you much more detailed, concise data in the next phase, but this is a good start. What resources do our teachers and students need to be successful? Once again, facilities is the second on the list, and so we're, as I said, we're seeing that theme. When we hop over to question five, you know, we just ask a generic, without any numbers, without any plans potentially to look at, we ask, are you willing to invest more in our schools to achieve some of the improvements discussed today? Forty, 55% said yes, and 30.8% said maybe. So in essence, when you add those together, you're looking at 86% that are open to some idea of investments in their schools, which means a tax increase potentially. And so that's a high number. That's a good number to start with before we start getting into the details of, okay, these plan, you know, these types of infrastructure improvements with these plans at this tax impact. And so we'll get more data from that. And so obviously, 14% said no. That's a low number for what we have done over the years looking at this. Question six, we like to ask this question just to see where people are at. You know, when you're looking at hundred dollars, less than a hundred dollars, 100, $200, and $200, you know, you're generally in there. And so this is not surprising that this, these numbers have come through. And question seven, if not.
Wait, could you say that again?
Yes.
Did everybody get that piece? What exactly did you ask?
So question six, if so, how much would you be willing to invest monthly? And so when we talk about what they would be willing to invest monthly, 25% said less than a hundred dollars. You had nine and a half percent say 100 to $200, and you had a high number that said over $200 monthly. And so 12.5% in essence would be willing to invest potentially up to $2,400 into schools.
What's the percentage break on it one more time, please?
Less than 100 is 25%.
Okay.
Oh, and so then you have a whole, what I said was not surprising, and I forgot to explain why, unsure is 53%. And that's mainly because, you know, we don't have.
Yeah.
What we're investing in. And so that, that does not surprise us though, when we see that. And so question seven then plays off of question six. If not, which improvements would be prioritized under the current budget, and which should not, and which should not be pursued? So obviously, the highest level is infrastructure. So once again, people believe that even if you don't go to referendum, they still want you to invest in infrastructure. So this is clearly on the minds of the public versus the community committee. And so with what we're looking to see in the, the next feedback form summary for the committee, these are the 21 individuals that met, went through a presentation, got to ask questions. So we consider them the informed group. And for the data perceptive, folks that are in the public, we're, we look at those more of a passionate group. Because if you're going to, and then in phase two, when we do these community engagement sessions, if you're coming out to a session, you're a little bit more passionate about your schools. And so, and that could be good passion, and that could be bad passion. They could be angry, but we want to see all of that. And so the second group that we're talking about, the committee, they're, they're the informed group. Once again, question one, what are your schools doing well? Economics, teacher staff, highest on the list. We certainly like to see that, that they believe that their schools are good, that they're being, their kids are being taught. That's what you want to see, which is, which is great data to see off the bat. Question two, what are the challenges do our schools face and what could be do better? Once again, aging facilities, small classrooms that have to do with the size of the facilities, those are your two highest. So you're seeing a theme play out in the community committee as well. Question three, what changes and improvements would you like to see in our schools? Same theme. This time, we have a new K through five school that received 14%. Upgrade facilities, also high up there on the list. What resources do our teachers and students need to be successful? Highest rated number is upgraded facilities. Once again, the same theme we've been looking at. Are you willing to invest more in our schools to achieve some of the improvements discussed today? 93% said yes or maybe. We would expect a high number from the informed group. These are folks that are buy into the community, understand the community, have deep roots in the community, and so they would want to see these schools be successful. So we would expect that number to be higher. It was interesting to see on question six that your unsure was much lower, and now you're looking at, your highest level is 100 to $200 in monthly costs potentially. And so between the two, what that tells us is, as you learn more, people will get more in tune and more, would be more willing to, to help out to, on any potential referendum or whichever program that you decide to go.
Ed, but that, that question, did like many not answer?
Certainly, it looks like people didn't answer it, because there was 21 people that were in the committee. So there's, these are the responses that we got.
So do you kind of count them as the unsure, maybe?
Um, no, I think when we take the response, it's the response you see in the numbers. And so at this point, we would say that there was only five people that answered that question in the community committee.
Right.
They just left it blank.
But I was saying, how do you look at that? Do you look at that as, count them as an unsure group, or?
Unsure specifically.
For that, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, they just did not fill out that question.
I just wonder how you look at that? And how, what, what do you take from?
Okay, so you're asking not necessarily on the answers, but.
Right.
Our perception of what that means.
Right.
Are they, you know, I guess I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't know if they just were rushed to get through, or whether they truly just, you know, didn't want to answer it. Suppose we can ask that at the next meeting, which would be in July. July is the next meeting?
Yeah, it's not surprising that sure, people not being able to answer that question.
Okay.
And then question seven, once again, which improvement should be prioritized in the current budget? You know, life safety, upgrade facilities. So they, what we're seeing in both of these is your, your public understands that facilities are needed. And so we like the data that we've received, they like their teachers, they like their academics. In the next phase, that'll probably show in that they like their administration and their school board, and we will test that going forward. And so we have just started phase two. This is the report for phase one, and we will come back at the end of phase two with obviously a lot more data, a lot more technical, to get you guys to the point where you have data make a decision whether to move forward, whether to wait. We, and we just were talking about dates tonight. But next phase, we will have another community committee. We'll put together a presentation based off 10 menu items, along with three potential plans and costs and tax impacts. And so people will start to see kind of where the, the numbers are going to be. And so we'll get better data. With that, we'll have probably four engagement sessions, one virtual, three in person, different times of the week, one on Saturday. The idea to get as many people in as possible, and they will still also be able to go online and fill out, see the presentation, and then fill out all these, after the presentation, the innocence, the survey that we're going to also do. And so in this phase, we do an. And so, in this phase, we do a survey to the public, it's a phone survey. We'll go out to the entire public for about a week, you know, take another three days for us to analyze that data. And at that point, I believe at, at some time in the end of July, potentially, we will come back to, to talk to you guys and give you our recommendation. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are you able to see, or are you able to speak to kind of what was the mixture of the 78 respondents? Was it mostly, do we know, was it mostly school families? Was it mostly families within our school community?
We would not, at this point, be able to do that online. On the next one, we will break out families, former families, and then no, no communication with the school.
Is it typically mostly school families on this first?
Probably, because, you know, how are, the question is, how are we reaching out to them? So, emails and things of that nature. So, you're reaching out to a class of people that are already connected to the schools.
So, then with that said, with these kinds of like, this kind of answers to the survey and whatnot, can you make any kind of like, any kind of assumption as to what, what we're going to look like going into July with like feedback? Can we, can we assume all of these numbers will drop off by 50%? Can we assume that they'll, like, is there anything we can?
We know probably close to 70% of the people don't have affiliations to the school. So, you know, you're going to have to get to them, see how they feel about the data that they look at. But no, this is, this is good to see in the instance of you have a good base of parents that are engaged. That can be helpful on different elections, if you decide to go to a referendum, and we'll get more into that, and that'll kind of guide us on our decision making and reporting to you guys on how, what we think, you know, potential elections should be. And so, it's, like I said, phase one is, were there any problems out there? Did we see anything that would cause us to have to come to you and say, you need to solve this problem first, or you're going to not be able to really move forward?
Can you give us an example of what that might be?
Sure. And I can just give you straight examples from other clients that we've had.
Right.
So, I told you, the first one was Lake Zurich, District 95, back in 2018. They didn't build a school that they were supposed to, and that came back to haunt them, and they had to answer those questions. Elmwood Park, they had a train tracks, and so, you had kind of the north versus the south, and they didn't want to lose their, their local schools. And one of the things that potentially would happen is, you'd have to redistrict, and the district administration did not want to talk about that. Obviously, redistricting can cause some heartaches in different schools. But the public came to us early and said, well, we want to know about that. What is your plan? And so, things of that nature is what, we want to make sure that there's nothing out there, and sometimes we just get good data, you know, and that's, that's great.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So, the indicator here is kind of like, what level of involvement we potentially have?
Right. 78 people pulling an online survey is, is good early data. Phase two, you'll get the data that you'll need to make decisions, and that will be great. We would expect 250 to 300 respondents to the phone survey, and then obviously, what we get, we'll have the same 21 people at the community committee, and then obviously four separate meetings. One, one will be virtual. We hope to obviously get a lot of participation there.
And how close are we to having those dates?
We just worked on them tonight, so I think we're-
Yeah.
Can we throw those out, some tentative dates we have?
We worked on those tonight. The menu survey is, the menu for the survey has been worked on, we're looking at cost estimates from Nicholas and Associates and the architects, but we just worked on the date tonight. I think we'll have those hopefully finalized tomorrow.
Okay. And have we talked to the, the village about having those dates on like the fire stations and the library boards?
We have not. We could.
I don't know how far ahead we might need to.
Yeah.
And we could talk about different ways to advertise this as well.
Of July what? Eighth. I think we tentatively are scheduling the meeting until July eighth.
Sorry, you probably won't remember, holding live meetings over two.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I'm just thinking if we can get those dates to the village, so they can help with some of that, or leverage some of their communication to, to non-school families?
At what point do we send things in the mail? I know that seems really old school, but I feel like you get everybody.
We will, we will give the administration kind of ideas on how they want to do that. I mean, we could mail postcards with the dates on, we can do texting campaigns, we can help you obviously with social media, with your own email lists. Obviously, your own email lists are going to hit your parents.
Right.
So, we want to hit the 70% of the people that are not part of your situation.
Yeah.
Correct.
And the, the survey that we do is also modeled and weighted to your community, and so, you're not going to get an oversampling of seniors or an undersampling of, you know, people not associated with the school district, and so, we'll, we'll make sure that happens as well.
By phone?
I'm sorry?
By phone.
By phone survey, correct.
Non-seniors by phone. You're, you're going to get a sampling of non-seniors by phone?
Well, we will, one of the questions, there'll be roughly 24 questions, one will be age, and so, we'll be able to break it down by age. There'll be cell phones, there'll be landlines, all of that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
And if you have questions or comments, obviously, they can get ahold of us at any time.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
We're going to move ahead with our quality review.
Oh, nobody spoke a bit?
No, so that's got to be from, from the online survey.
I haven't pulled up on here, but I'm not sure how to get it on the.
Ask, get a trouble.
I don't remember.
Oh, here it is.
They filled it out that night.
All right, so I have really cool data to share with everyone today. So, we had our end of the year in-depth data review, quality reviews at the end of the year with every building, and, you know, that's that full slide deck with over 100 slides that we go through, we dig into subgroups, we dig into the different assessments that were given, that we gave this school year, and we reflect on our action plans. I pared it down a lot, so you weren't here for hours tonight. But this is just an end of the year update with highlights. Feel free to ask any questions, and I'm happy to-
But we are going to send the board, the entire, for those who are interested in reviewing it.
Very excited.
Yeah, and on Thursday, I think Shannon's going to get that sent out to you all on Thursday, so. So, at the beginning of the year, if you all remember, this is really small print, but we had, we set these big goals this school year. So, we used our data from last school year, and we set these big goals for this school year. So, we have been reflecting on them throughout the entire school year to make sure that we were on track to meet these goals. We've had quality review three times this school year, those big in-depth data reviews, but at every single principal meeting, which is every other week, we've been talking about our data, our attendance data, our academic data, and we've just been really, really relentless on talking about data, and making sure that we are able to meet, we were able to meet these goals this school year. So, I'm going to report out today on iReady, IAR, and SAT. That is not the only data that we use. We really believe in formative assessment data, so that's what we use for the, for all, all of the time throughout the school year. These are just our big end of the year assessments that we're reporting on to you right now. So, iReady, we set our goals for kindergarten, first and second, based on iReady, because they do not have state assessment data. But you can see our goal for ELA proficiency for kindergarten first and second was that overall kindergarten through second would be 65% proficient. Kindergarten, 72% are leaving on level this school year, 67 in first grade, and 46 in second grade. You can see when, the percentage of students that started the year on level, you add the fall numbers from mid or above and early on to get that. So, for instance, kindergarten, 47% began the year, because you're going to add the fall 13 and the fall 34 in that blue and green category, and we're ending the year with 72%. So, they've made some, some pretty impressive growth in ELA kindergarten through second grade. Here's kindergarten through second grade math. Our goal for math was 50%, because last year, their proficiency level was, was much lower, was in the 40s. So, you can see that kindergarten is leaving at 66% proficient, first grade 58%, and second grade 39%. You can see that second grade, only 7% of them started on level, so while they didn't make that 50% goal, those students grew, grew a lot this school year. Okay, this is where things are extremely impressive, so we're going to start with math. If you look at these, the IAR data, when we look at this, we want to look at it from year to year, but we also want to look at the cohort growth, so we want to look at the students from last year to this year. So, for instance, if you're looking at third grade students from the '22, '23 school year, 60% of those students in math ended the year on grade level, but if you follow those students down to fourth grade, 55% of them ended on grade level this year, according to IAR in math. That was our only, only cohort of students that decreased from last year to this year in all of ELA and math throughout the district.
They also started way higher.
Yes, they did. They did, they started at 60%. So, so if you look though, fourth grade to fifth grade, those students made 18% growth, fifth grade to sixth grade 13% growth, sixth grade to seventh grade 16% growth, and those students from seventh grade to eighth grade made 19% growth in math. That's some pretty impressive, pretty impressive data, so.
The other thing I want to say about the IAR, especially at six, seven, eight, is this is the year that we are transitioning with our plan. So, we're doubling the math minutes, we're adding curriculum, we're adding math leadership that we haven't had in a long time. So, this is unbelievable growth, but we are anticipating even greater success next year for our students. And they started the year at 27%, and they ended up the year at 41, 42, which is-
Really impressive.
Schools that are, we benchmark against, and this isn't the last, but schools that are most like us, or even like a little bit of an ambitious school for us to compare ourselves to, are scoring in the low 40s in math. So, but we're not done.
Yeah. ELA is so exciting. So, if you look at third to fourth, they made a 4%, those students grew 4%. Fourth to fifth, they grew 5%. Then when we get to the junior high, if you remember, the junior high just adopted Amplify. They had a huge push this whole school year for all teachers, our ELA teachers. They did some really amazing work with Amy Quatron's leadership, plus Kristen Ritchie was hired as a literacy coach, and then the teachers really just are fantastic ELA teachers over there. So, the fifth to sixth grade, they grew 28%, sixth to seventh, they grew 31%, and from seventh to eighth grade, they grew 29%. And those eighth graders, 75% of them are on grade level going into, going into the high school.
Wonderful.
Go, please.
No, that's wonderful.
Amy, amazing leadership, Kristen, amazing leadership, the teachers, amazing work, the kids, God, I love them. They worked their tails off. And when the scores came in, they were thrilled. They were just juiced up about it. And let me just say again, so we went from 42 to 67%. As a comparison, a school that I think is like a stretch, school that we benchmark against, their score last year was in the low 40s. Over 20, and I'm not going to mention the school's name, people want to dig the data they can. That's 25% higher than a school that I think would be a very strong competitive school for us to compare ourselves to. It's incredible. And here's the thing that's most exciting, they're hungry for more.
Yeah. Yeah, so ELA was incredibly successful, just all of the work that they did this school year. If we look at the action plan that the junior high wrote at the beginning of the school year, I mean, they checked off every item on that action plan, and they followed through with it, and, and it, it shows. So, really impressive work. The high school for SAT, the goal was 57%. ELA, they reached that goal of 57%. Math is very, very devastated by 45%, but I can tell you with great certainty, they've already met probably like five times by now to come up with plans for the, the next school year. They are, they are really eager to, you know, improve that for next year.
The other thing, and we're not making excuses here, but they went to a new test this year.
Yes.
So, it was a new format and new testing. So, it was not a consistent test from years past. And I do think that when the comparative data comes out, that the number will look much better than it does here, when you compare us to like schools.
Isn't there a caveat that, with this though, with Illinois moving?
And Illinois is moving to the ACT, which our teachers are already prepping for, and already have looked at multiple retired exams and the benchmarks, that they're preparing for the transition.
Who takes the SAT? Juniors and seniors?
Just juniors.
Just juniors.
Just juniors, yeah. And in October, all of the state data will be released, so we have the preliminary data right now. So, we've compiled all of this, but in October, the official state data will be posted. So, at that point, we'll be able to see what is the trend, what is the trend data for the entire state. We don't know that yet.
So, what, what do we use to kind of have visibility on the freshmen and the sophomore? Because we look at every other grade, right, leading up to it, year by year?
Yeah.
And then it's like, juniors.
High school has, they've created their own assessments for freshmen, sophomores, juniors, seniors, and that's what we reflect on throughout the entire school year to see how they're, especially like freshmen and sophomores, how they're progressing toward that SAT. So, they're all practice SATs that have been created in-house. Yeah. But I just reported juniors right now, because it's the end of the year state data, but throughout the whole year, they look at all of these practice SATs that they give throughout the year. Student behavior is a great success this year too. So, at the high school, they decreased referrals by 117. At the junior high, they decreased referrals by 59%. And at Manning, they decreased referrals by 41. The, I mean, Jack can reflect on just from last year to this year, he can provide some insight, but I, the, the teachers, the administrators, the students, I mean, it was just a really great year overall with student behavior.
Is that like a culture change, or how does, how does that happen?
I, I think so. I think that like everyone was just really excited going into the school year, the expectations were high, like this is, we're expecting compassion, we're expecting amazing behavior, we're expecting academic achievement, and I mean, the entire district delivered. So, I think so, but Jack can maybe reflect on that from like that's, last year to this year.
I'm just, it's, it's from top to bottom. It's from the school board, to the teachers' union, to the admin team, to the teachers and the support staff. The kids are amazing young people in this district. I just can't tell you how much hope they give me, they're amazing young people. The parent support in this district is incredible. There are, you know, expectations from the parents, but they're reasonable. The community gives us tremendous support, we have the resources we need. We're on fire, there's just no doubt about it. I don't know what else to say, and I'm so, it, it is everybody, it's a whole team effort. You don't get results like this unless you got a whole cohesive team. And there's not a sector in our school community that's not outstanding, in my opinion.
I think the, the goals and the follow-through were really incredible to see this year, where, I mean, the, at, at Miller, they had, they had teams that got together and came up with different like incentives for behavior and expectation, school expectations. At Manning, they have these assemblies every, I want to say every two weeks or every month, that are really cool assemblies, that are just celebrating students and all their, not only their academic accomplishments, but just all of their accomplishments. Jada's been running those, they're really, they're really fun, they happen often. The junior high, they have assemblies often as well, to kind of just bring everyone together. And the high school, every other week, they do something to bring all, the whole school together, so I, from me coming into our district, it's just a really nice place where everyone's celebrated for all of their, their talents, so.
The thing that's most exciting is, we're still hungry. We are not done, people, we're going to go even higher, but this is the fuel to incentivize that continuous improvement and growth.
And then, this is ridiculously impressive. So, chronic absenteeism is something that is a nation- So chronic absenteeism is something that is a nationwide issue, especially post-COVID. And the work that our teams did in this is extremely impressive. So Miller, and this is very, the twenty-three, twenty-four data, it's very, very close to accurate. It's not one hundred percent accurate at this point in time. The final submission is in July for the state. So it'll be obviously accurate in July. But this is like maybe within a percentage point up or down. So, but Miller, they decreased their chronic absenteeism rate by sixteen point five percent. Manning by six percent. The junior high by almost thirteen percent. And the high school by almost four percent. Absolutely incredible. And this, to me, says students want to be here. So that's really exciting to, to say, like, our kids really like being in school. But that's been a ton of work from the principals, the secretaries, the nurses, the teachers. Just everyone had a hand in making that possible.
And kids doing the right thing and families supporting our young people. It's got to be a partnership, especially at the lower levels. Because most five-year-olds don't make the determination, right? That's a parent decision. So, and I want to shout out everybody, but Sam was the principal and the lead in this. But Amanda, the nurse there was crucial. The whole team, it's a whole team effort. It's a distributed leadership effort. If we have another, we will have another year like this, and then our team needs to write an article and do presentations.
What counts as chronic? When does it go from, can you speak to that?
Yeah, so they missed ten percent of the school year. So it averages about seventeen-ish days. So our, our motto this year was no more than five, which is well below that seventeen chronic rate. But, you know, we know that kids are going to get sick and we know that there are times when kids need to stay home for various reasons. But seventeen absences feels like a lot, so.
Yeah. Excited to see what this does next year with the tweaks to the calendar too.
Yes, that calendar is really exciting.
Very interested.
Yeah, nice work on that calendar committee.
Anna's helped me put together a video about this year and next year's attendance. And it will include, hey, everybody, the way we built this calendar is so there's a number of opportunities for you to get away with your family. But please, during the school year, take advantage of what we have and we need to be a team. But I think the national chronic absenteeism rate is in the mid twenties right now. So we cut ours in half and it was a whole team effort again.
That affects our school ratings, doesn't it?
It does, yeah. That goes into that whole summative designation score.
Some of the best high schools, reputation-wise in Illinois, are no longer exemplary because of their lack of chronic absenteeism. And I want to, I guess, shout out the whole team. But Mike Lipinski at the junior high, we, yeah. It was a whole team effort, but some people just did some great leadership.
Some really creative like incentives. You know, if you come to first period, you get a ticket, which goes into a drawing for something that junior high kids actually want, like really, really cool stuff like that. But then the junior high and high school, I mean, they had, there's a bus that they were able to pick kids up if they didn't come to school. So, I mean, there was a lot of really cool.
Yeah, Adam and Jada, same thing. And, yeah, so many people.
And even, I just don't remember having a motto before, you know, about. So that's part of it too.
I think that brings the attention that you're like, hey, wait a minute, you shouldn't miss that much school.
Reinforce how important it is.
So then, you know, did we meet our goals? So those goals that I, that I projected in the beginning. For IAR, ELA, by the end of the school year, so third through eighth grade, our goal was fifty-five percent. Yes, we met that. It was actually sixty-one percent. So we were above that. For kindergarten through second, our goal was sixty-five percent. We were at seventy percent for K two.
Those are pretty ambitious goals if you look at previous year's performance.
Yeah. The typical growth goal for ELA kindergarten through eighth, our goal was seventy. We were at sixty-nine, so we were like right there. I would have rounded up, but I couldn't round up because it wasn't above point five. But, so fifty-seven percent for SAT. So yes, we met that right on the money, fifty-seven percent. We just, a side note, all state assessment data, they're not fully final until October. But we have the preliminary data that we calculated this off of. So about, here's math. Our goal was fifty percent for IAR third through eighth. We met that at fifty percent. For kindergarten through second, our goal was fifty percent on IREDDI. We met that at sixty-two percent, so we were above that. The typical growth goal for kindergarten through eighth grades is the percentage of students who met their growth goal target was sixty-five percent. We didn't quite meet that, so we were five percent off there. And then the math SAT at the high school, the goal was fifty-seven, they were at forty-four. So we did not meet that goal.
These goals were calibrated to put us in the top ten percent of the state. So, and some higher.
For the high school.
Yeah.
This is, so at the end of the school year, we got our, at the high school, the department heads, the administrators, district office administrators. For the elementary schools, the administrators, the coaches, we got everyone together in a meeting. And we reflected on our school year and we said, what went really well? What were areas where we need to improve? And we came up with some big area, big district-wide goals and kind of areas of focus for next year. So those ones highlighted in yellow are our big three. We're going to still have an overarching data goal for next year, like we did this year in those previous slides with ELA in math. We'll still have something like that for next year, just to, you know, those are big goals. But what are our areas of focus? Obviously, we always want to have a results orientation. We want to be sure that our kids are learning and they're learning at high levels. So we want to be really serious about our data, like we were this year. Equity, we know from our equity audit, that's an area where we definitely need to focus. When you get the quality review presentation, all of the slides, we broke everything down by subgroup and that is definitely somewhere that we need to, we need to focus going forward. And that came out in the equity audit as well. So we know where, we have some preliminary plans for next year based off of that equity audit. Engagement is something we also want to work on. We spent a lot of this year working on what is it exactly we want our students to learn? Looking at those standards, digging really deeply, identifying essential standards. But now we want to take that to the next level and make sure that we are, our students are engaged while they're in the classroom and they're, so we're going to really do some work on engagement strategies.
That gets to something that's hard to quantify, but our students' love of learning, students' joy in their learning process, students engaged in what they're doing and so.
And then the ones that are not highlighted are things that we've already begun doing work on. We just want to continue that work. So our collaborative team meetings that we have on Wednesdays, we're so fortunate to have that time on Wednesdays to meet with collaborative teams. And we really want to focus on that action piece. So when it says questions three and four, those are questions in the PLC process and those are all based on action. Like we have the data, what do we do with it now? And that's what questions three and four are all about. Like if there's some kids who didn't learn the intended content, what are we going to do with, about that? And coming up with a plan for that? And those students, we need to enrich and extend their learning. What does that look like? So we want to have those collaborative team meetings really focused on the action behind the data. So we have a plan to support our kids, whether it's filling in some gaps or providing that extension and enrichment. While focusing really on equity and addressing the needs of the subgroups that come up in those data conversations. Intentional planning, we just want to continue that work that we started this school year. Really deep planning to make sure we're, we're instructing our students at high levels. And the Illinois Comprehensive Literacy Plan is something that came out this past school year. And we really want to dig it. We started to dig in a little bit. This next year, we're taking as kind of a, a learning year to learn all about it and have a very slow rollout. I can say that the junior high is well on their way there. They're probably already, you know, they're doing so many things in there because of the resource that they adopted, really just fits super nicely with that Illinois literacy plan. And Benchmark, which we have for kindergarten through fifth grade, also fits really nicely within that. So that's kind of nice that we have a resource that already marries the Illinois Comprehensive Literacy Plan. But those yellow are big, big three. And that is, do you have any questions about anything? Any thoughts?
I just want to say something else that you guys met. And it's, thank you for your presentation with this, but another big ask from the board was presenting this data. And so not only getting SMART goals and, and, and getting buy-in from all the teachers and students, but also presenting that to us. It's something we've asked for, at least since I've been on the board and you guys have delivered with that. So I thank you for that. Because it's wanting to be informed and what's going on, how are our kids? And you, you've done it midway through and at the end of the school year. So thank you and kudos to all the work that you are doing. With gathering, with planning, meeting, meeting after meeting, so.
Yeah, thank you. And it really, like, the success of the schools and the, the teams in our buildings wouldn't be possible without you all. So thank you too.
It's quantifiable data. You know, it's not, not a gut feeling. It's very helpful.
Makes it there's, you know, we're not saying everything's perfect. There's areas that we are going to work towards and, and improve. But you're making a way for that and ways to move and change and so.
Yeah, it's been a really exciting year.
Again, with that data, you know where to work on.
Aside from our agenda notes, will this be linked anywhere on the website for parents to see?
Yeah, so Jack did mention he wants something to really be able to share with parents with all of this, all of the data. We can share this if this is what, if this is good to share or we can make it look prettier. I mean, it's really up to.
Seeing those numbers and the goals would just be a nice click out of the website when people are questioning where our reading and math are, so thank you.
We can do a version of it. We're sending everything to the board because it has teacher by teacher, skill by skill, domain by domain. We, Carla made a wise decision not to present that. The level of specificity is incredible. You can see every classroom and then every grade level and specific skills and domains and how well we achieved, so we know what to do next. And I want to compliment Carla too, because she really brought this process to our district and spearheaded this and led this and filed through and organized and collected and gave people feedback. So she's, was the steward of this quality review process and filed through tenaciously all your lungs, so.
I have a question. I don't, you said earlier, Kevin, about the absenteeism and how having, just having a, having a tagline, having an emphasis on it, especially at the beginning of the school year, kind of got ingrained in people's mind, this is going to be the year of attendance or whatever. Are all staff aware that you're presenting this, that you present this information to us? Because I think that drives also a lot of.
No doubt.
A lot, you know, like, the expectation is that, yeah, this is going to get reported on and, and every year, we're going to ask for improvement. We're, we're going to want to see improvement every year, right? And so like the, hey, this is coming. This is, this is part of the, this is part of the rhythm of things in this district now.
Exactly.
And, and at X date, we're going to have to present to the board, which means presenting to the public, by the way. It doesn't mean, it doesn't mean presenting to us. It means we're presenting this to the world. You know, this, we're going to, we're going to put our, that's why it's important to publish this stuff on our website in some way, shape or form. That like, this is the day when we put, we give our report card.
Yeah.
You know, so anyway.
Yeah, they, oh, go ahead, Jack.
Well, I, we did a presentation to the entire staff. We said, if you are working in this district, you're going to be gathered in the auditorium on whatever, at a hectic date, which July, or not July, May twenty-second. So everybody from our custodial staff to our cafeteria staff, because they're all a part of it, to support staff, to every single teacher in this district was present. And we gave the end-of-the-year report. Now, I sent that to you as part of my superintendent evaluation, but we celebrated all these things. To Carlos's point, this is part of the rhythm of the district. That people know what gets measured gets done. We're going to follow up and.
And it's going to be on public display. Sorry to interrupt you, but that it's going to be on public display.
Public display.
Down to the detail, right? And so this is important.
Yes, not, not by teacher.
I didn't.
Yeah, no, I know. I just want to make certain that we said that. No, but, and, but in the point, yes, to, this is our public to everybody. And the most beautiful thing is it gives us the opportunity to celebrate all the incredible work. Because I'll tell you what, the teachers, staff and kids work their tails off this year.
Well, Jack, you got to come up with new slogans, because these kids know these slogans. So you guys got to get creative. The, you know, maybe we'll say, continue to strive and drive for more than five, or less than five, rather. You know, like, you got to get creative, because the kids, they know it. They, 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 like, it makes a difference, you know? And I, I, I think like what Carlos was saying, what Adina, what everybody has said. And yes, thank you so much for presenting the data. Because I think having that on a consistent basis throughout the year, during the board meetings, like Ange said, available for the parents to just say, you know what? I can't make a board meeting, maybe I can't even review this particular recording. Let me just go to the website. I think just knowing it's more accessible with the slogans for the parents to say, you know what? You know, like, no more than five. The kids are, my son told my daughter one, one morning, you know? He was, she was like, I don't know, man, he said, uh-uh, no more than five. He was like, get up. You know, like, it's, it's ranking volumes on a magnitude from not only the administrators, like Jack said, it's, it's top to down, but it's literally top to down, including the kids.
Absolutely.
So, you know, it's, it's definitely making a difference, you know? So again, like Adina said, thank you for just taking the time to really, and, and like Kevin said, this is quantitative and qualitative data. It's, it's spot on. It's, it's no guessing, it's no guestimations, it's no, I think this is what it may mean. It's very direct and straight to the point, but it's, it's understandable because it's in layman's terms. You know, to the point, the kids know it. You know, which is, I think, awesome, because it's keeping everybody motivated to say, like he said, this is what it was for this year, but we're, we're not backing down. Like, we're about to expect come August, we're taking it up a notch, you know? So, I mean, it's, it's amazing, so thank you.
Very briefly, but to Whitney's and Carlos's point, we'll meet with every grade level next year and go over this data with the kids, because they're a crucial part of the team. So all the kids know the SMART goals, all the kids know the performance data. We celebrate their hard work and then we just build on that. And when we, at our opening of the year, August meeting, the staff will have all this data, so.
Yeah, and every, every student this year, kindergarten through twelfth grade, did individual goal setting. So they had their goals for math and ELA and they were very individual to them. And so the entire district did that.
And they, yeah, they've verbalized that too, their goals and stretch goals.
Yeah.
But I, I do echo what, like, getting out to the public, just really pushing our calendar and what it means, the work, the hard work that the calendar committee did and, you know, what the board looked at. So just looking for creative ways to get that out, especially with registration. Because you hear the woes of, oh, I was asked about absenteeism. And I, I know it's probably like hard for our assistant principals to like chase this, but look at the results they have. I also want to help back them up, that's, you know, to say that, hey, we have opportunities. We know, like you said, there are times when you want family time and make that hopefully easier.
Yes.
So pushing out that.
Ask, if you're going to ask the question, don't take it personally. If you feel confident in why there was absenteeism, don't take it personally. They're just hovering to make sure your student is learning.
All right, well, thank you all. It was a really incredible year. So the, the teams, the students, the parents, the families, everybody did an incredible job this year.
Are you already excited about the numbers for next year?
Yeah, we are, yeah. Yeah, Jack and I are a little bit obsessed.
Get that separate file going.
Right. Okay, we're going to look at it like this. Yep, and we'll, we'll follow a similar process next year where we have our big goal setting meeting, the beginning of the year kickoff will be our goals for the next year, those three big areas of focus. And everyone's kind of prepped already because we laid the groundwork at the end of the school year to say this is where we are moving next year. But then Jack will do that whole kickoff presentation again and.
And then do you come back to let us know what those goals are or Jack do you?
Sure, yeah. If you want them, they're yours. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great news. All right, we're going to keep it moving. We're going to our self-work, self-workers compensation renewal.
Yeah, so each year, the board approves our renewal for workers' compensation by July first. We are in a part of a cooperative through Gallagher. They were noted, they notify the district after our May board meeting. So, you know, unfortunately, we have to discuss it and approve it the same night, which is, which isn't best practice, but, you know, the, the deadline is July first. So looking at each annual increase each year, the, the cooperative looks at the last three previous years. So dating back to fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and this current year, twenty-four. They do a formula to calculate twenty-five's increase for renewal for workers' compensation. But then that factor, they look at payroll costs, paid claims for injuries. They look at. They look at what the cooperative is going to reimburse the other districts and they all put that in a multiplier to justify the annual increase for the following, for the next year. So looking at this year's annual, or this year's rate for workers' compensation is $57,280. For next year, the district is seeing a 122% increase to $104,368. It's a large increase of 122%. The driving force of that is the last three years, the district has paid a significant amount of worker compensation claims. So that is driving the force of the large increase. And looking back at the last three years, that's the three years outside of COVID. So other districts are seeing that increase, not as much of 120%, 122%, but going forward, the district is making adjustments to make sure that claims go down, such as working with the cooperative and purchasing supplies for free provided by the cooperative, such as mops, cones, signs to put on hallways and throughout the schools to make sure that students and staff are aware of slips and falls and the best practices. We are also working with the cooperative on training and making sure we get awareness videos to staff and present them at institute days, making sure, again, that staff is just fully aware of what to do when they do see, you know, water on the floor or, you know, a cracked step. So making sure that the claims are decreasing going forward.
And the focus on that stuff is because it's slips and falls.
Correct.
Are like 95% of workman's comp.
Yeah, so fiscal year '23 and '24, the just, the large claims are slips and falls. That we saw, we saw a large number of injuries with staff on, you know, water on the ground or, you know, ice outside. So we, those are the significant claims that are paid by the insurance company. So that's why we're targeting those slips and falls, awareness more because that is the bulk of our claims.
Would there be any kind of safety to the kids? Because I could see slips and falls happening because of water bottles. Like, can we tell the kids, keep your stuff in order and not leaking and?
Yeah, so we're going to work in conjunction with our insurance for student accidents and making sure that we can combine the awareness and combine the videos to share because you are correct. You know, if a student's water bottle is leaking and a staff member slips, well, there is a correlation between that. So we are going to be working with our insurance carrier for student injuries with our self workers' compensation to make sure that the awareness is not just with staff, but with students as well.
Great. So best case scenario, like great team and training, what do we expect to see? Or what do we hope to see as a result of that, of what, like, I guess, as far as increases or staying stable as far as our premiums?
Um, you know.
What is our goal, I guess, a hope?
Yeah, so I mean, the, I don't want to see 100% increase ever again. I mean, that's, that's right there. I don't, I don't want to see 100% increase again. So, you know, we're going to make sure that we have strong, you know, areas of growth, such as the supplies and awareness videos. I can't guarantee a number, but I just know that I, we're not going to see 100% again.
I'm going to put another clever say. Do the safety dance.
The insurance company, the insurance company worked with us. They sat down with myself and Mandy, who's our accounting coordinator, who goes through workers' compensation and went through, you know, person by person, where's the growth, what happened and all of those individuals. So they did work with us on notifying and what, what to do going forward.
So just want to ask this to leave here. Like I know this was, the cooperative was great for us and money savings, but is there any thoughts or where you would say we have to rebid and, or are we still probably at the best savings we could be at?
Yeah, I, at this time, there is no interest in leaving the cooperative.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Anthony. We'll move to our policy, our first reading with some policy updates. And the committee just met today. The key word was riveting committee meeting, if anyone wants to join a policy committee. So seriously saying that. But basically there, well, we have a service that is through a log group that looks at all policies. And they, they're always looking at policy changes. And most of those times, the changes are different wordings or different references and different footnotes. It's the biggest consideration taken and with some of those small changes was Title IX and how they looked at some of the references and how they read through the policy. So we really didn't have anything major, but it's, we have to review it, we have to approve it. So it's available for board members to look through. But just one of our, something our board is looking at and we talked about previously with our policy changes was the policy 2110. And that's a change in our board officer, a term. So the committee discussed that as the board has discussed wanting to change the terms to two years. And it would be not including this year, but moving forward for the next time we go through officer elections. But we can discuss it more. I think the board kind of spoke with what they desired, but.
But the policy committee is proposing that change.
Correct, as desired by the board as a whole.
To two-year terms.
And that would be for president, for president, for vice president, for secretary. And, and the board just wants to look at, as a whole, something, again, that one of the goals that this board set out was kind of looking at our policies and seeing what's, what's appropriate, what needs to be changed. So just trying to do that a little bit better this next coming year and moving forward. Any other questions or discussions? We'll move to our action items. The first, the chair will entertain a motion to authorize and direct the treasurer to pay any additional bills received in June, July, 2024 that have been budgeted for the current fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. DeCade?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number two, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the adoption of the routine 2024, 2025 business office resolutions as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. DeCade?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Motion carries. The chair entertained a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement for a before-after-school program at Manny Elementary School as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. DeCade?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number four, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the SLF workers' compensation renewal in the amount of $104,368 for the 2024, 2025 school year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. DeCade?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number five, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding 2024, 2025 for the dual partnership with Community College District 502, College of the Page and Westmont High School as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. DeCade?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Motion carries. And number six, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the termination of employment with the following support staff member, Dawn Marchesi.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. DeCade?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
All right, I'm sorry. Number seven, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the lease agreement between SACET and Community Unit School District 201 for the 2024, 2025 school year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. DeCade?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover? Oh, Ms. Hoover.
Yes.
All right, all right, we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Very quickly, the Chicago Magazine article that's featured in front of our webpage, Chicago Magazine, one of the most, you know, famous magazines in our region, highlights Westmont, talking about how it's a hidden gem for families largely due to its highly rated schools. That's beautiful to read that. And I think it's well deserved and a credit to our whole school community, but it's really nice to get that recognition. Part of that came out of our Realtor Fair so we could share the message with everybody that we had earlier this year. It's very beautiful. We'll have a more detailed report, but the five essential survey came back and we're highly organized. So we're very excited by that. That's an anonymous survey authorized by the Illinois State Board of Education, developed by University of Chicago, given to about 98, 99% of our students, the vast majority of our teachers and a good portion of our families. And we have some of the best scores overall in the state for our district. So that's really, it's a way of getting feedback from our community about the quality of work we're doing. And so that's really nice to know. Depending on what research you read, young people spend approximately five hours a day on their devices, those who are 10 years or older. So I hope that every student in our district is reading at least 20 minutes a day also because there will be great value in that for them. And I wish everybody has a great summer, but so proud of our school community and everybody just supporting each other. It's very beautiful.
Any questions for it? All right, it's board reports.
Um, not much going on, but school never ends. Everybody's in camp, summer school, everybody driving back and forth to the building. So the kids are still active and ready to go. On a side note, not necessarily a board thing, but in cooperation with the Park District, next week at the high school, you can come see the, oh God, it's called the PVPN. I can't think, I believe it's PVPN with the Park District. Their theater program is going to be performing at Westmont High School and we do have some students in our district that are in the play. So next Friday, Saturday and Sunday, two shows on Saturday and a Sunday matinee. So come on out and see all the kids and all the hard work, kids and adults. There's some parents in our district in the play as well. So yeah, come visit and see them.
We discussed our policy committee, but I just want to remind our community to, if they haven't seen, celebrate some of our Westmont High School students. Please take a look at that. They deserve all the accolades, all of our student athletes. They're working so hard, they're doing so well and showing their commitment to not just academics, but they're balancing that hard work with hard work on their respective sports, school plastic bowls and things like that. So always, I'll always celebrate our students, but it's just.
I think our sports really kicked butt this year. Like they really did.
Our baseball team says everyone's, they usually have, the high school usually has their sports time. Even the junior high, they have their sports assemblies where they honor these kids. But I'm glad we had a chance to honor them, a few of them here. But it just speaks to the level of what's going on in our, in our school. And I think, again, everything that we're doing academically and the teacher support and the teacher trust and everything, that it shows elsewhere and outwardly. So we're doing great things here. There are many things over the summer, just take a look, take a look. There are many things our parents are doing, our junior sentinel groups. So keep your eyes open, but I'll go over some of these future meetings and events if you guys don't have anything else.
I think the registration is open for the Hoop Fest for the junior sentinels. Might be worth mentioning.
It's kind of a great annual thing to see all of our students back and raising money for a great cause. Again, keep your eyes open for all dates and advertisements. But with that, all buildings will be closed June 19th, 2024 to honor Juneteenth. So happy Juneteenth. All buildings will be closed on July 4th in honor of Independence Day. So happy Independence Day for everyone there, enjoy. And our next CUSD 201 school board meeting will be July 16th at 6:30 PM. Also, keep in mind that we have some things happening with our committees. So stay abreast with our website, we'll put those out there.
It's going to be at Miller School?
Oh, yes, sorry, the next, yes, the next, our next board meeting will be on location at Miller School. So July 16th.
16th, it says 18th.
Exciting.
Is it July 16th?
Mine says 18th on here.
Did I have it right?
16th is the date that's on the calendar, I think.
Okay, okay. July 16th, okay. At 6:30 PM at Miller Elementary School.
In the gym, cafeteria?
Oh, you know what?
The gym of cafeteria.
In the caf- cafeteria.
It's in the updated board meeting.
Cafenazian.
Where it says board meeting.
But it is an auditorium too.
Cafenotoryan.
Cafnasia.
We'll get back with you at that time.
Date changes.
All right.
But Dina, did you want to cover the board meeting? How effective, how the time is changing, effective July 1st? Look under communications, I would say, yeah, see if that's where it was.
Oh, I'll, okay, yes, so I'll read this. Moving forward, all board meetings will start at 6:30 PM, effective July 1st. It'll start at 6:30, it's closed sessions, but many times we'll have committee meetings to be held prior to that, 5:30 PM, which we look forward to getting, giving dates of which committee meetings will occur on which, which days. But we're hoping to streamline or planning to streamline most of those committee meetings to be before board meetings.
An evening with 201.
Yes, join us. All right. The chair will entertain a motion to, I'm sorry, I do that, no closed session. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn that June 18th, 2024, regular meeting of the Board of Education.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.